The five members of the town council serve as the legislative and executive body for the town of Avon. A council president is elected from among their peers and has the power to sign contracts, ordinances, and decrees approved by the council. The Avon, Indiana Town Council meets twice a month at Avon Town Hall. A full schedule of their public meetings can be found online at avonindiana.gov.
Call to order the Avon Town Council meeting for November 2nd, 2023. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Julie, would you mind taking a roll call, please?
Greg Zuzen.
President.
Don Loudon.
President.
Robert Pope.
President.
Tim Roberts.
President.
Steve Eisenbarth.
President.
First item is our consent agenda, which includes the November 2nd check register and approval of minutes from our October 19th council meeting. Any questions, comments, or wouldn't anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the check register dated November 2nd, 2023, and the approval of the minutes on October 19th, 2023.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Julie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Tim Roberts.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Next item is the first of two public comment opportunities. You may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. This is not a Q and A session, but an opportunity to share your comments with the council. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your time to three minutes.
My name is Tim Pettigrew. I'm at 8854 Prairie Trail. Tonight, I'd like to talk about open communication. I applaud the town of Avon for publicly promoting open and effective communication by utilizing live streaming on the web. I'm concerned the town of Avon has an operating procedure that states, quote, "No presentations are to be done during public comment once finished." I had a presentation on the October 23rd zoning committee meeting, but was not allowed to access the projector to give my presentation, even though the presentation was previously viewed by the communications director. Rightfully so, the planning staff utilized the overhead projector for effective communications to present their findings. The petitioner also has the opportunity to utilize the overhead projector for effective communication to present their proposal to the committee and public. However, the remonstrators during public comment do not have the same opportunity as the petitioner to use the overhead projector to effectively communicate their ideas to the committee and to the public. So both of those are critical. The public watching the meeting in person or live streaming on the web does not get to see the remonstrators or see what the remonstrators are presenting. This is a disservice to the public and prevents a fair and balanced view of the arguments. I understand that there are very few occurrences of remonstrators utilizing an overhead presentation. However, when required, an overhead presentation is an effective tool to communicate all sides of a discussion. Please consider changing the operating procedure to allow remonstrators to have equal opportunity present their views through the best method available, the overhead projector. Established discussion time constraints would still apply. None of that's effective. It's only just the presentation itself. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See no one come forward. We'll close that section of public comment, move on to department updates. Steve, Mr. Moore, it looks like you're up first.
Steve Moore, Public Works Director. Some of the updates that we have for today are Ronald Reagan works near the Portellos north of 36. Concrete was poured today. We're hoping to have that actually completed and back open up to traffic on Wednesday of next week. So that's, I have strippers coming out. I have sign guys coming out, so we're hoping everybody gets done next week. Dan Jones Road, Section 1. We are running into some wet subgrade, and so we're doing some subgrade treatment, and we're still on schedule to get it open to traffic this year. I doubt that we're going to get surface and final pavement markings, so we'll have painted pavement markings on intermediate for the winter, then finish up with surface and markings in the spring along with some final landscaping, but it will, should be opened up completely for the winter. Speaking of winter, we did our first application of brine, liquid salt on our slick spots and roundabouts and through the construction site on Monday for the freezing temperatures that we had or came close to, and we're pretty satisfied with how that turned out. So I'm glad for the use of all-terrain salt system. Got, oh, Phase 2 of the Dan Jones Road. We've got Price 4 clearing, and one of the things that helped us have Phase 1 is getting trees out of the way for utility relocations to help get those done and not delay the project. And so we're going to hopefully have our quote approved, maybe tomorrow or soon, to have the trees cleared on Phase 2, and then utilities can start relocating, and that project should bid this month with, through the in-out letting process, so they'll start construction in the spring. So if the utilities are out of the way, it'll help speed things up. Raceway Roundabout, we got another concept for the center median work, and we're going to review that. They're working on getting ready to start doing the right-of-way acquisition on that, final design, so they're working diligently on that project. Pothole patching, we're picking up on pothole patching. I have some more spots that I've noticed today, so we're trying to get those resolved. That's pretty much it. Any questions for me?
Not a question, but just a positive comment. I observed our DPW director assisting a motorist stranded on US 36. I pulled up with my lights on, and his lights were on, and we completely stopped traffic for a moment, and then I said, "Thank you," and I ran off. Steve, thank you. Seriously, what he was doing is a motorist, he saw a need, and he stopped and helped him, and it was very, very much appreciated. I just want to say that publicly. Thank you.
Steve, I've got something for you.
Do you have something for me?
The Plan Commission. Was it fast enough?
To get away, yeah. At the Plan Commission meeting, there were two hearings that were continued for traffic study from 900.
Okay.
And they know about the roundabout angling it away at 900, but part of the issue is where the Ace Hardware, I guess, is going to go, as well as there was a presentation for AD Town Homes.
Yes.
And number that was given was that the last real, I guess, traffic study was done three years ago. We told both petitioners that they needed to get an updated traffic study compared to the one from three years ago, as well as I said I would like to have you at the next meeting where they have this next presentation, because it is traffic, it is an issue. That gentleman who was just up here lives in Prairie Trails, which is in the, is in the county, and so we're going to have to get the county involved, the town involved. There was a gentleman that lived there. I don't know if he lived right on the S curve. We even said you need to take my house out and remove the S curve, so my comment to you and ask of you is to be part of any of those traffic studies or provide your input for the town, because I'm not sure anything else can be really approved there until these things are done.
So you know they've reached out to me, and we had traffic studies done for the future roundabout, and so we've offered to supply that for their use as well. So yeah, we are coordinating.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Hi, Phil Peoples. I'm the city planner here. Drew Wilson has settled into his new role as the Code Enforcement Inspector and the MS4 Inspector, but he's been supplementing, because Public Works is down a couple people, so he's been supplementing Public Works as much as he can. And it's a good time, too, because we lose the high weeds and grass complaints about this time of the year, which is about half of what he, what he does until the leaves fall off the trees. The Board of Zoning Appeals heard one case in October. It was for dumpster enclosures along 900 for the Harvest Landing Lot 2 development, the Ace Hardware development, and that variance was approved. The BZA had nothing filed for a November meeting, so they'll have no meeting in November. The Plan Commission did have a busy October with seven items on the agenda. In the end, only four of those, or four of those items were continued. Two of them were continued after a full hearing, but Sudan Trucking, Avon Business Park were approved, and the Avon Christian Church subdivision rezoning was forwarded with a favorable recommendation, which is on your agenda this evening. The Plan Commission will again have a busy November meeting with four of those items from the previous months being placed on this agenda. We do have two items already with a continuance request pending on them, so that would be a convenience store on North Avon Avenue and Harper Estates, which is a new primary plat on the Wesleyan property on 800 East. The Harvest Landing Lot 2 and the Village Place Town Homes are on old business for another hearing, and then we do have a series of UDO text amendments that are on the agenda as new business. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Phil. Chief Stoops.
Sean Stoops, Chief of Police. The Avon Police Department partnered with the Washington Township Avon Fire Department in a three-day nighttime joint training exercise that focused on search and rescue techniques, utilizing police officers, firefighters, drones with thermal imaging, Project Lifesaver transponders and receivers. This training was meant to help both of our agencies respond faster and more effectively to locate lost individuals' calls for services. Officer William Clark and Monica Childers are about to complete their field training program and will be working a regular shift very soon. Officer Gabriel Copley is finishing up his 10th week at the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy and only has six weeks more to go. So, and then he'll get to switch with the other officers. They'll go to the academy, and then he'll come out and finish his field training. I want to thank Detective Sergeant Aaron Stowall and Officer John Flowers for being such good sports and participating in our annual daytime kid-friendly trick-or-treating event at the Town Hall on Tuesday. They were absolutely incredible. In October this year, we responded to 1,433 calls for service. Our current average is about 1,360 calls for service per month, which puts us on pace to still exceed about 16,000 calls for service for 2023. We responded and made 15 OWI arrests for the month of October. It should also be noted that Officer Monica Childers, she handled about five of those herself while in field training, so this month she, single-handedly, was responsible for about a third of those OWI arrests, so she's, she's out there. I think she's got it figured out. Avon officers made 527 traffic stops. We responded to 41 domestic civil disputes. We worked 101 vehicle crashes. Eighty-nine of those were property damage-only accidents, and 12 of those were personal injury. We had about 111 property crimes reported, 38 crimes against persons, and we looked into 29 child investigations, and that could be anything from a chin's case or an alleged abuse case. And then finally, another highlight would be this was probably one of the higher numbers for this category, but we responded to 100 alarms. I'm not sure what the jump was there, but all of those statistics I just rattled off are just a few of the, the highlights that you have there in your packet, so I'd be happy to answer any questions about any other of those statistics that you might have. We want to thank everyone who came and pay their respects to our K-9 Indo last week, and thank everyone who sent cards and flowers. It meant a lot to, not only to Sergeant Steve Casperzick, but our department as a whole, to see everyone there and pay their respects. We also want to thank everyone who attended the memorial service for our late Court Clerk Lori Medlin. Our condolences go out to her and her entire family, friends, and all of our coworkers. Lori served as the Court Clerk for the entire duration of the court's existence, and she will be deeply missed. Avon Police Department is now accepting applications for the position of an intelligence analyst. The deadline for that application is November 27th, so if you're interested or you just want to get more information about it, please go to our town's website for more information about the desired qualifications and as well as the job description and the benefits. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Sean. Mr. Wade.
Evening, Council. Jared Wade, Communications Director for the town. First, I was invited to participate in an event with AIM today with their youth council. They had an online summit that started, and they invited me to participate and help them kind of kick off that whole online summit. It was really neat to just engage with a lot of the youth that are all across the state and find out what they're excited about, what they're interested about, so on and so forth. And then, of course, Chief Stoops mentioned it briefly, but October 31st, we had our Second Annual Trick or Treat at Town Hall event. I don't know an accurate number, but I know that most of everybody planned for roughly the same amount as we had last year, and they ran out of, most of the booths ran out of candy around the halfway mark, and we still had more kids coming through. So it was just fantastic to see the kiddos and see families and just be able to participate in such a fashion. A few numbers for you. I know some people enjoy numbers. We had 527 different street names submitted. Myself and Bill and Ryan have sat down, and we've went ahead and gone through all the names, and we feel that Streety McStreetface is going to be the best option. That is a joke. You're welcome to laugh at that whenever you wish. No, we did come up with seven to 10 names that we think are going to represent Avon professionally, but also positively, and we're kind of fine-tuning that number right now, and we're hoping to have some suggestions to council for your approval before we send it back out to the community to get their input once again. So I appreciate Ryan and Bill participating in that. Let's see here. Our e-newsletter just went out today. If you're wanting to know how many people are reading it, I took a statistical look right before coming to the meeting, and we have 3,303 reads from our monthly newsletter as it stands right now. So the average is right around 450 people reading it, which I think is actually quite nice. It's getting that information out there. Our new podcast is doing well. We've got over 220 different downloads of all the episodes. The quick recaps are obviously doing better. They're nice, short, condensed versions of all of this. And then next year, in 2024, we're going to be starting to provide technical assistance twice a month here at Town Hall. Myself and Angel, we're going to dedicate two hours a month to opening Town Hall, and I'm inviting anybody that might need some help finding out how to subscribe to a podcast or sign up for alerts or know what's going on on the website, have a walkthrough with that. We're going to open up the doors and help them as much as possible. So that pretty much does it for the communications. If it is okay with council, I'd like to give a quick overview of parks as well. Shelby Marshall, who's our Parks Director, is unfortunately ill, and there's a few things that she had that I wanted to share with everybody as well. First, the maintenance crew is hard at work at prepping for winter. If you don't know, outside is cold right now, and they work outside 99.9% of the time, so we want to give them a shout out and thank them for all their hard work going through all this cold weather and preparing the trail system for even winter. That's always a tough job. This upcoming Friday is the ceremonial first pitch between what is now Avon Youth Sports or Avon, Indiana Sports, which used to be AJAA, as well as the town, so I know some of you are going to be there, some of the staff are going to be there. It's going to be a fun time. Probably it's going to be a little bit chilly, so wear a jacket if you've got one, but it's going to be this neat ceremonial, the ball being thrown from AJAA over to the town. Nice symbolism and some good pictures hopefully will be taken. November 11th, which is just about a week and a half away, is the first ever Veterans' Day celebration. This is the drone show that we've been talking about. It's going to be here at Town Hall from 4 until 6. Drone show happening at 6:00 PM. Again, it might be a little bit chilly, but the Parks Department has been working really hard on making sure we have some heaters. We have hot chocolate, some coffee. There's going to be thank you card stations, things like that, so it's going to be a really fun time and a unique time. Again, this is the first drone show that's ever happened in Hendricks County, and we're hoping that it's going to be something that everybody's going to remember down the road. Last but not least, Christmas tree lighting ceremony. Brand-new tree going up out front right off of US 36 December 2nd from 4 until 6:00 PM at Town Hall. We invite anybody to come out and participate in that. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions about communications and anything about parks. I will defer to Ryan.
I have one question. At the Plan Commission meeting, there was a lady that, her name is Lana Scott Callaway. Has she contacted you? That, okay. She wanted to provide you input for naming streets. She's a long time prior to Avon being Avon resident and has a lot of historical knowledge, and her family's been here, so Lana, this is Jared. Jared, that's Lana.
Lana and I actually spoke up at the front office, I believe.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm very forgettable, so don't worry about that. It is okay. Actually, no, Blair, I believe was the last name, right? So I've actually done some research. I reached out to Susie Truex from the Avon Washington Township Public Library, and I've had some conversations with her. I found some more history about the Blair name, and to hopefully encourage you, it is moving. I just, I'm getting information, and I'm going to sit down with Ryan and Bill and make sure that it all fits and we can get it out there, but I've got the name down. I looked it up right when you said your name, and we got...
Yeah.
The public will have input, yes. The input's going to be, it's going to be sent out to everybody. We're going to send out about seven to 10 different names, and then that's, that's how we're going to get the community to be involved in that process as well. But the nice part is all of the names that are... I apologize, I'm talking to them, and I should be talking to you. The process is, once we get all of those names selected, we're going to actually provide the name and then the reason behind the name, so we're going to give foundational information about why that was selected. Blair is no exception. We're going to provide details about why the name Blair is important, so that way those that are voting have all of the information that they need, just like you all want the information in totality before you make a decision.
I appreciate it. I really do, but like I said, if you haven't lived here all your life, no way back, you don't know who Blair is, but since you're going to get to that...
I got you covered. My pleasure.
Thank you, Jared and Shelby. Thank you. You're good. That's it.
Glad I did my job.
Moving on, council comment and liaison reports. We'll start with you, Ms. Loudon.
Nothing, Jared covered it. I was just going to remind everyone about the first pitch tomorrow morning, but he's got that covered.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Roberts.
Nothing to report this evening.
Yes, sir. Mr. Zuzen.
Got plenty of things here. Attended the Chamber Board meeting on the 20th of October, as well as the Chick-fil-A ribbon cutting. Your second location is now open, so for the people on the west side of town, you don't have to drive to the east side of town anymore. I also was part of the Plan Commission meeting as Bill kind of did the overview. We, I won't go over what he talked about, other than to say that the Avon Christian Church subdivision was a unanimous recommendation, positive recommendation to the council for approval tonight. Attended the Hendricks County Economic Development Partnership luncheon and quarterly board meeting, and there's presentations there about attainable housing, the LEAP project up in Lebanon and the ripple effect that it would have here for people in Hendricks County. Attended the Indo-K-9 service for Officer Casperzak. Went to HRH retirement celebration for Yvonne Call Pepper, and just wasn't able to make it to the Lori Medlin get-together, but sent my condolences to her family, and don't forget to vote. All I have.
Mr. Eisenbarth.
I'm glad you got the "don't forget to vote," because that's, that's important. Yep, very good. Besides that, I just want to, I want to thank Sean and his staff for all the stress you guys have been handling with the gun incidents, and I thought, I think your staff has been handling it very well, so I just want to say that. So that's been good, and the communication's been good, so we appreciate that. Want to thank everyone here. This is a great turnout. Come every time you can, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Steve. I got a handful of things here. Last week, we said our final goodbyes and separate services to our Court Clerk Lori Medlin and Officer Casperzick's K-9 partner in Dominus. Both, both services were wonderful tributes in their own right. Both were obviously taken from this world far too soon, but we were blessed to have them in our lives. I was able to attend that interagency training for lost persons that Chief Stoops mentioned. Many lessons were learned, but the good news is each victim was located in a timely manner. My thanks to everyone involved for the opportunity to see our first responders in action, get some insight into how these operations take place. Given the time and target audience, I think we had an amazing turnout Tuesday morning for the Trick or Treat at Town Hall. It was wonderful seeing so many of those kids, smiling faces, and congratulations to the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles for the most votes for best table. That HCEDP board meeting last week, where we received an update on that project LEAP up in Boone County, as well as a bit about Ready 2.0. If you guys aren't aware, this is a 9,000-plus acre project. It's just massive, and it's expected to add, they expect to add 20,000 jobs by the project's completion. Lebanon's population right now is about 17,000, so expected to more than double. That's kind of crazy. I had a wonderful opportunity to participate in principal for the day at Avon High School. I shadowed Mr. Shockley and his duties from before the beginning bell rang to after the kids left for home. I cannot begin to explain how incredibly complicated and vast the scope of a high school principal's daily job truly is. There are many cities in the state of Indiana that have fewer people in them than our high school. If presented the opportunity, please take advantage of it. I don't think you'll be disappointed. And last, big congratulations to our Avon Marching Black and Gold for their 16th ISSMA State Championship. Well done and great work, ladies and gentlemen. And that's, that's it for me. We already got the tagline in for "going to vote." Make sure to vote by this Tuesday. Moving on, new business, the 2024 insurance renewal. They have not gotten us that information, correct, Ryan?
That's correct. We were trying our best. If you guys recall, last year, you guys didn't want it at the very last meeting of the month, so we did try to be proactive and share that information with you guys at the work session in October. We tried really hard to get it. They actually think they're going to have me the numbers by tomorrow, so if I get them tomorrow, I'll still send them to you all tomorrow, but I would just ask that you table this item until the next meeting. We can still do it at that meeting, so apologize for that. We were trying our best to get it to you.
I'll make a motion that we continue the 2024 insurance renewal until a future meeting.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Julie, would you mind taking a roll call vote, please?
Robert Pope.
Four.
Tim Roberts.
Four.
Steve Eisenbarth.
Four.
Don Loudon.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Next item is final reading ordinance 2023-20, zoning amendment 23-04, Avon Christian Church Subdivision. Mr. Peoples.
Yeah, this is a request to rezone a piece of property, about 11 acres, 11.28 acres out on 100 South, for a 18-unit, single-family residential development. It is a rezoning from R2, which is a single-family residential zoning classification, to an R3, which is a mixed zoning classification, allows a few more land uses than the R2. However, the petitioners aren't using it to put land uses in there. They're, they're just using it to shrink the lot sizes a little bit so they can put 18 units on, on the 11 acres. Now, the property is currently approved with church. The church, what the church intends to stay, they're going to split the property roughly in half, and they'll put a cul-de-sac in. they're gonna split the property roughly in half, and they'll put a cul-de-sac in and then put 18 single-family lots around that and build it. It's a Habitat project. Petitioner is here. The comprehensive plan on this particular property, it doesn't have an overt recommendation for it. Because it doesn't have an overt recommendation for it, what we will typically do either, is either extend a nearby recommendation through the property, or we'll use the underlying zoning. In this particular case, it's the underlying zoning as R2, single-family residential. That's single-family residential classification, so single-family residential is the appropriate land use classification for this one. The staff, when we presented this to the Plan Commission, we did recommend approval of that. And the reason we recommended approval of it is, one, because it's consistent with the plan. But, but two, it is surrounded on four sides by institutional land uses. It's just a little area around the north, which is a wooded lot on the north side of, of, of the area where the houses are going. That's a, it would be adjacent to a residential lot. All the rest of the area around it is either church or school. And so it seemed to be a decent place to put a development such as this, a little bit higher density than, than typical, but it's not atypical to the single-family residential use that's on the east side of the church. That residential development's zoned R2, but it's probably developed at a density closer to R3, because it was developed in the county and then brought into the town in R2 zoning. The Plan Commission did hear this one. They heard this one on, and it's October, I'm sorry, on October 23rd. There was only one remonstrator. That remonstrator submitted a letter to the file. They did not attend the hearing. And the petitioner, and the petitioner presented a case with some members of the public in favor of the development. We did, from the staff, forward this petition, petition to the Plan Commission with a recommendation that they include two commitments. The first commitment being that a certain land uses that are permitted in the R3 district, but not permitted in the R2 district be excluded. And that would be dwellings duplex, dwellings triplex and florplex, dwellings bungalow court, dwellings townhomes, dwellings apartment buildings, small live-work dwellings, assisted living facility, facilities, fraternity, sorority, or student housing, group residential facilities, nursing homes, hospice, be prohibited as primary uses. And then the Thoroughfare Plan, 100 South is the arterial street, so arterial streets require 120-foot right-of-way. And so one commitment on this is that a 60-foot half right-of-way be dedicated along the entirety of the subject property in accordance with the requirements of the Thoroughfare Plan. The Plan Commission did vote on this. They forwarded it with a favorable recommendation and the vote was five to zero. Two members of the Plan Commission were not at the hearing. They were, they were absent at that one. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on this one.
I'll jump in here. We talked about this briefly, Bill. Since the legal description of this proposal includes the property that the church currently sits on, what protections do we have from rezoning this property today? And the church potentially selling the land underneath it to another developer at the new rezone standards?
No, they could. I mean, so it's a rezoning from R2 to R3. So if the church were to obviously convey the five acres or five-plus acres that they're gonna, Habitat wants to develop on this petition, and then retain the R3 portion for themselves, and then they choose at some point in the future to sell that piece of property, another developer could come in and, and build, you know, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 18 single-family dwellings on that one, too. It's, it's a little bit a strange lot. The, the issue with that, of course, would be is they would have to gain access through the Habitat. Because we're trying to eliminate as many access points along 100 South as possible, so they wouldn't be able to put a brand-new access point. They'd have to access it through the existing access point for the, the Habitat.
I don't know which one of you this might be a question for, but can that be a commitment? I, I don't think this is the case, but can that be a commitment that we make tonight as a prerequisite for the approval to reduce that legal description, to not allow rezoning the property that the church currently sits on? I, I don't wanna lose the ability to view the development that might come here in the future if the church were to vacate that property.
And what would you be concerned about? Would you be concerned about certain types of multifamily development, or what would you be concerned about?
Just the ability to have control over that rezoning process. I, I don't want that property to be sold to another developer without us having some kind of say on what that potential rezone might look like. Again, because we're rezoning that entire plodding land today.
Well, you can't have that kind of discretion, but the way the staff condition, which was recommended by the Plan Commission, it says essentially that, that although the R3 standards would apply, it has to be single-family housing. And the, the condition that is before you would say no other types of residential housing that would normally be allowed in R3. So it really is constrained, as Bill said, it would constrain any other development on the site to single-family dwelling under R3 standards. I said that just.
Right, it would be, they would be able to use the R3 development standards.
So, but again, a rezone, when we talk about zoning, it's all about what can you use the property for. The petitioner has asked that be applied to the whole property. So you could, you could deny it based upon that request, but you can't, you, you can't really split it. Okay, they've requested R3, so you can say yes or no. But there are, I think, restrictions which are being placed on the, are being recommended to you, which would limit the type of development that could take place on the property.
If you look at the permitted use table, Bill has outlined.
It's not permitted use. It's, it's the developer that I'm worried about.
This handout that I have.
I understand. My concern is not the permitted use. My concern is, I like that Habitat Humanity is doing this development. I am worried about another developer now having the R3 zoning and bringing something that would not be necessarily affordable housing. That's what I'm concerned about. And I know that's not something that we can take into consideration for one of these five criteria. Hence, I wanna make sure we retain control in case that the, the church does end up selling that building. I, I, I don't like the idea of completely denying this zoning is just because of my, my, my personal concern with this. Is there room to continue this, to change that legal description, and would the petitioner be up for that? Is that, yeah, help me make sure I'm in the.
I think if you change the legal description, you'd have to go back to a public hearing with the Plan Commission, and that would substantially delay the project at least two months.
We'd probably put it in the November, the November 27th meeting.
Yeah, so it would, could you ask the petitioner to amend their application? Sure, you could. And they can say yes or no to that. But again, the idea, this concept, and I understand what you're saying, but if you're asking me whether you can place conditions about who the land could be sold to, I would say you, you don't have that right.
Sure.
That that's a right you don't have. You can, you can designate it for some zoning classification. And then within that grant, you can place reasonable conditions that relate to the request. But, and again, with all due respect to your concerns, I understand your concerns. I don't think you, I don't think that any municipality has the power to place a restriction on land as to who it could be sold for, who it could be sold to.
I understand that. I wanna make it clarify. That's, that's not what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about losing the control over what that proposed development might be within the guidelines of what we are allowed to be concerned about. Again, we are, we are rezoning more a developed part of that property that could be redeveloped in the future, and we won't have any, any say-so in what that could look like in the future.
Right, it, it could stay R2. It's, it's currently R2. And if you change it to R3, you're right, it could be developed under R3 standards, but not, not any, not just any use. The uses are being restricted. But it could be developed to R3 standards as long as it's single-family. And the other part of it, yeah, I get it.
That's, that's the part I'm concerned about, yes. Help me walk through then what's a timely manner, which perhaps this is a question for the petitioner as well. Help me walk through what's a timely timely process that maybe we can negate that concern.
Well, it, it would have to go back through the entire public hearing process.
Yes, you'd be asking them to amend their application, amend what they asked for. So you'd be saying, we need you to either change your legal description to only be the site that you're gonna develop, or otherwise make certain agreements as to what can happen on the church side. I'll call it the church side of the property. And that's not what they've requested. And they have a right to request what they've requested. And they don't have a right to have that approved necessarily. That's your legislative discretion. But you're asking, you're asking really to have an amended petition for rezoning. And I believe that would have to go back to the Plan Commission. I think that is not the type of adjustment that you can make at this stage without a public hearing, again.
Okay.
I know when they came for the, the petitioner came for your initial introduction to council last council meeting. One concern that I had, or what I would like to also see in there as a commitment, is that we eliminate one of the accesses to County Road 100 South. In other words, he explained that the current church opening or entry off of County Road 100 is, into a parking lot is not, would not meet the roadway standards. And so they would have to make their own road going into the subdivision. So my question was, instead of having two rightaways or two entrances there, could we close the current church parking lot entrance? And the church then would come in off of the new road that's being created for the subdivision? So that we have one opening on the road? Could we make that an additional commitment for zoning purposes?
I believe, yeah, I believe that you could make that an additional commitment if the petitioner agrees to it.
You can ask for it.
Okay.
I've got a question. I don't know if it's Dan or Bill, but on the two commitments, the, the one that's excluding the certain dwellings as primary uses, and the second one, no problem, the 60-foot right-of-way. But on the one as primary uses, what I guess, I'm wondering how much wiggle room that gives for all those items ever listed there.
There's some wiggle room in, I mean, I'm not gonna lie. If the church decides to use, do a ministry that requires a living facility, then I think from our standpoint, we can't interfere with that because it would be considered an accessory use to the primary use of the subject as a church. So if the church, and I've dealt with churches that have had coffee shops and have had gyms that, that you could buy memberships for, and, you know, martial arts studios in the past. And the idea behind these, even though these were in residential areas in these churches and daycare centers, for that matter, they were doing all these things, it was them exercising their religious freedom, exercising ministry within the church. And therefore, we were precluded from enforcing that because the, the primary use of a religious use is permitted. And therefore, their ministry, regardless of what that ministry is, was permitted. And so, yeah, I mean, let's say they wanted to do an assisted living facility on there as part of their ministry. I would say that they could probably do that as an accessory use to the religious use. But they couldn't vacate the premises and put a assisted living facility on the property. So, yeah, there's some wiggle room in this particular case.
Yeah, I'm looking at the square foot and think, trying to think about that and think what might the chances be? So not a real question with it, except that.
Tim, great. I've got a few reminding of the five criteria, so I've got some questions, I think, for you, Bill. Actually, the first one was just a comment. Since the area around this, maybe, here's, here's the question, maybe you agree or correct me if I run. Since your area around this proposal is identified as residential, I believe this fits in our comprehensive plan. You sort of mentioned that earlier. Would you agree?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's consistent with the, the, the plan itself has no overt recommendation, but the plan specifies that you default to the underlying zoning. The underlying zoning is residential. By precluding some of the uses that are permitted in R3, we're meeting the comprehensive plan's intent.
Infill projects are oftentimes rather challenging to develop and fill out. Would you say this is the best use of this empty field to develop as residential?
I always say if it's consistent with the plan, it's the best use. I mean, realtors usually have a different definition of highest and best use, but from a planning perspective, yeah, residential use, consistent with the plan, is the best use.
What impact, if any, will this have on home values in the area around this proposed development?
Well, I don't think it'll have any. Because, as I said, the property is essentially surrounded on four sides by institutional uses. There's just a small little portion up on the northeastern corner that's adjacent to a wooded, large, single-family lot. That's the only lot that it's adjacent to. For the vast majority of people, it'll, there'll be no impact because they'll be, they're next to a church and they'll be next to a church right before. I mean, you got a school, you got a church to the south, you got a church to the east. And then you've got the school property wraps around to the north, so I can't imagine it would have any impact on property values at all.
If the adjacent or nearby neighborhoods were built today, what difference would these have in comparison to this proposal? Under our current zoning standards?
What's the question again?
If the adjacent neighborhoods were being built today under our current zoning standards, what difference might they have in comparison to this proposal?
Well, the one neighborhood to the east would probably have, would probably have had to build larger lot sizes. And then they would have. My understanding is that neighborhood was constructed as an entry-level subdivision back, I think, in the 2000s. I don't think that that kind of development could be built now based upon our architectural standards and those sorts of things. So I think you would probably see it best to move up type of neighborhood rather than entry-level subdivision.
We're better yet. How's the comparison of the Lennar neighborhood going across the street?
Well, I think it'll be comparable to that neighborhood. Yeah, the Lennar neighborhood. The Lennar neighborhood is, it actually is, was being constructed using the enhanced architectural standards. So the idea is those, those houses should be, this neighborhood will probably go in under the standard architectural standards that we have, just the base architectural standard. So the Lennar neighborhood, they complied with the enhanced architectural standards, so it'll be a probably a little bit, at least more aesthetically pleasing, attractive neighborhood.
And this one's not going in under the Enhanced Video Standards because?
No, no, they're using the, they're, they're doing the base standards. Yeah, I mean, they had the opportunity to use the enhanced standards and get a density bonus. Instead, the, the, they chose to, to rezone it to R3 and use the base architectural standards.
Any further questions for Bill? I, I have some questions for the petitioner, if you wouldn't mind coming forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. For, forgive me, would you mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Chris Barnett, 3135 North Meridian Street, Indianapolis.
Thank you. Can you tell us a bit about the Habitat for Humanity program? Specifically, any protections in case a participant decides to sell their home?
Well, I have the slideshow. This is a little bit of a repeat, so those of you that have heard this before, please bear with me. We are one of the Indianapolis metropolitan area's leading builders. We have built 838 homes over our 35-year history, 44 of those in Hendricks County, either us or the prior Habitat affiliate. We, I wanna stress that we serve four counties, but the homeowners in each county the homeowners in each county are people who come from that county. So we will be providing homes at affordable cost to Hendricks County residents who want to live in Avon. Our process from the application through the education, the sweat equity and the affordable mortgage gives the homeowners the keys to their house. And in fact, we will be instituting with this subdivision some manner of a shared equity model which ensures that it that the development will remain somewhat affordable over time while still allowing the homeowner to capture some measure of capital gain should they sell. If they sell while we still hold the mortgage, we have the right of first refusal. And we have recently exercised that in actually in the city of Greenfield for a house that we built there a couple of years ago. We prohibit the use of the house as a rental as long as we have a mortgage on it. And so we believe that the town's good intentions, should you choose to allow us to provide these affordable homeownership opportunities, that we will respect the intent that these be homes that are affordable and remain affordable into the future.
The the only other one I have is there's been three commitments mentioned now. One's the right of way, one is the permitted use, and one is the single roadway access. Are you able to commit to those three commitments today?
I can certainly commit to the first two that were a matter of record before tonight. I can't in good conscience make a commitment on behalf of the church without consulting with them. And so it's subject to their process to make the decision about being willing to close one or the other entrance. I would stress that in our discussions with Mr. Moore about meeting the town's roadway standards, that has come up. And part of the reason that we showed the second driveway into the church property was so that when we get to the point of actually plating the subdivision and seeking approval from the Plan Commission, that we will have a better picture of how the roadway standards and the drainage standards all play together to sort of define that entryway. So actually, I was hoping that we might have the opportunity to address that at the plating stage rather than at the zoning stage.
You are unable to make that a commitment with what? How can we include that in if if this is going to be taken at a later stage? How can we ensure that that's going to happen as a part of this rezone process?
You could not. Remember, when it goes to plating, the only thing the petitioner would have to do is say that they satisfy your standards. One of the things they would have to do to satisfy your standards is show that they have road access. So so that, you know, they if they if except for the commitment, they have to show they have road access one way or the other. So if you want to make that a requirement before you vote on approval of a rezone in the way of a commitment to know that's been committed to or not, as we discuss in training, a rezone is where this happens. It's your opportunity to do that if that's what you want to do. Later, you have non discretionary approvals, and you would not be able to control this issue. So again, if that's something that is crucial, the majority feels like it's crucial to have that information, or whether the church would commit to that before you vote, then you need to you you need to probably continue that and and get that answer. I I might ask Bill Peoples. Where did Bill go?
He's just on the other side.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Oh, there he is hiding. We're against him. But I he may want to discuss what the town's position was regarding the entrance. Because that question was asked at the Plan Commission. And and you may disagree with it, agree with it, but I think you should consider whatever that position is of what the street department said about the two entrances.
The street department basically said one of the entrance. So we had this problem up on Dan Jones with the Wesleyan property. And at that time, we said, well, and I think that was a plating, but we said, well, you're going to have to get rid of that main that entrance off Dan Jones and then consolidate those two entrances on there. We would have done the same thing with this church during the plating process. Because they have to go because of the number of access points, they have to seek a waiver of the standard. Because there there's only a certain number of access points allowed, I think, in a quarter mile or something like that. So they have to wave, get a waiver of that standard. And normally, the part normally public work says, no, we're not going to approve that waiver. We're going to you're going to have to close this entrance and then consolidate the entrances with the other entrance. Which is exactly what we were doing on Dan Jones Road with Wesleyan Church property.
I like commitments. Sorry. I like I like having that as a right of forgive me, I've taken up plenty of time. Can I open up to further questions?
I have one question from the previous meeting. Who controls the HOA? Is it Habitat for Humanity?
During the development, it it will be like any other development. We will have a point at which it's turned over to the homeowners.
Thank you.
Hey, any further questions? Please.
Mr. Chairman or Mr. President. Yeah, this this one's not the chairman. At any rate, I was just advised during that discussion that the church board would consent to the condition of closing one entrance.
You are able to commit to.
So I am able. I am able to sign on to that commitment. So that should help you.
Yes, thank you. There's no, it sounds like you have communication with your board here. Is is there a way we can change that commitment by commitment in any way to reduce or modify or remove the church property from the underneath where the church building is currently, right, what they're trying to maintain? I I I don't think it's the case, but is there any way to remove that from this rezone request? Without going through that via commitment, I I feel like I asked that earlier. I'm just.
I don't believe so.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty three dash twenty to include the two commitments made during the Plan Commission meeting, but also to include the commitment that one of the roadways, which is the current existing church parking lot entrance would be closed and the new entrance coming in off County Road one hundred. Dan?
I might suggest we also add language to the motion that would say in that that these commitments be reduced to writing in a form acceptable to the town. That allows us to get the actual wording of that worked out. Bill would actually. In your zoning ordinance, you have a form that has to be used, and I think that I'm just really saying we'll get that into something that can be recorded, a form that can be recorded.
Okay, so what he said, the two commitments for the Plan Commission that were agreed to, and then also a form to be completed that would essentially shut off one of the entrances to County Road one hundred.
I would agree to that. So I'll second that.
Julie, I have a first and a second. Would you mind taking a roll call vote, please?
I'd love to. Don Loudon.
Four.
Steve Eisenbach.
Four.
Robert Pope.
Four.
Greg Zuzen.
Four.
Tim Roberts.
Epstein.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, legal counsel report. Mr. Taylor.
Very busy, but.
Very busy, but I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Second opportunity for public comment. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your time to three minutes. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that section of public comment. Second opportunity for council comment. Anyone?
I I must state that, and I regret that next meeting I won't be here. Now, on the positive note, I'll be six hours behind us, not forward, so I could try to do, and I should have good internet, so I should, if you need a quorum, I could figure that out. But I apologize. It's just too, you got to tell my wife to stop traveling.
Enjoy yourself. Thank you. Thank you for the heads up, Steve. I just wanted to heads up to those watching online and who are here in the room. We'll soon begin accepting applications for our boards and commissions appointments for next year. We make those appointments in early January. Please, we need your help. Thank you. That's it. Oh, no, sorry. Council calendar, Ryan.
Yeah, you guys covered it. A couple of things. We do have our first pitch tomorrow, so hopefully we see down at the Avon Sports Fields at six twenty five and one hundred South. Also, our.
Is that at ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock. Yes, sir. Veterans Day event as well on November eleventh. You can join us for that. Six P M. Four P M. Sorry, four to six P M. Show is at six P M. Thank you, Jared, for the clarification. And then our next town council meeting is November sixteen.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.